Call to order the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville on Tuesday, October 22nd, 2013, and we'll start with roll call.
Ali Nichols.
Here.
Patrice Steiner.
Here.
Mike Dunn.
Here.
Barbara Das.
Yes.
Barbara Stackhausen.
Here.
Dick Bonin.
Here.
And Ken Killian.
Here.
Our first item this evening is a public hearing regarding ordinance 1322, creating section 610 and amending section 2204B regarding beekeeping. Joe?
Yes, as you mentioned, this is a proposed ordinance changes to allow beekeeping as a, basically a permitted use within the city. Right now, the neither ordinance, section 6 or section 22, addresses beekeeping. So since it's not identified as permitted use, our stance is basically that it's not allowed. So these proposed changes would provide regulations regarding the keeping of bees. Basically, they are, with a permit, and assuming they can meet the conditions and the standards that are outlined in the proposed ordinance, they would be allowed to maintain the bees following those guidelines. Basically, what the ordinance says is they submit an application, we notify the surrounding property owners. If there's no concerns that are expressed, they just have to indicate that they can meet these standards and a permit can be issued. If there's some concerns that are raised by the neighboring property owners or anybody notified, then there's a hearing held by the plant commission, and then there's a process that they go through, and then the plant commission will either approve or approve conditionally or deny the permit request. There is, as I mentioned, the standards that are outlined in the ordinance as far as the keeping of bees, location, orientation, size, and so forth. And there's also an appeal process that is included in that. So that's what we're proposing. The plant commission did review this and worked on drafting the changes, and they recommended approval. Staff also recommends approval. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
One other thing that I should mention is, since there is a permit, we would also need to discuss if we would like to charge a fee for that permit and how much that fee should be.
Will you bring that back at another time, Joe? Or do you have a recommendation this evening?
I don't have anything particular. I think the number of the plant commission discussed, if I remember, was $25. Does that sound right?
Wow.
That was.
Is that what you remember?
I think so, yeah. I'm pretty sure. Because we, you looked at a bunch of other cities that had permits, and you picked that number as...
Well, it seemed to be the most standard. It ranged from no charge to like $100.
Right.
But $25 seemed to be a common number, I guess. But it's whatever we want to propose.
Applicant statement?
I have...
Yes.
Do you want questions now?
Oh, yes, sure. Go ahead.
Okay. I just have a question, and I've tried to read through it. Is there any provision that when you get a permit, since this is, is there any provision that there has to be any liability insurance?
No.
And has that been discussed? I mean, I know that there are some people who have extreme allergies to bees and bee stings.
That has not been discussed.
Wouldn't it come under homeowners?
How would you figure out which home it's from?
If it's not on, I mean, if it's, there's a place here that says that you can, written permission of the property owner is required if the applicant does not own the property on which the bee, but it, I don't know that that property owner would think that they had to have.
In that instance, yeah, that would be a question.
I mean, I don't know if that was present in other ordinances that you reviewed from other communities, but I, I mean, I'm aware of people who have to, who have severe allergic reactions.
Of the communities that I looked at, I did not come across any that included such a requirement.
It's too bad that the doctor's not here that's looking at having, he had a very good explanation and explained it to everybody about the percentages, and I don't, I'm going to pretend because I don't remember all that he said, but it was very minimal, like almost nonexistent, as far as the problem with that.
If someone were stung by a bee, how would you determine which hive they belong to?
I don't know, but...
You can't.
That's my question.
You can't.
Are you going to prove it?
I do have one question, Joe. I may have missed it when I was looking through here, but is it necessary for the license to bee keep, to be renewed yearly?
As it's proposed, it would be a one-time permit, and as long as the, you know, the operation continues, they wouldn't have to renew that permit.
Is that per hive?
That is per location. Per property.
I guess my question was, how would we know if the bees were even actively kept anymore, or if they were kept in a proper manner? I know that a neighbor can complain, but I guess I, I know that we do have some licenses that you have to renew them on a regular basis.
Correct.
And I did wonder about perhaps adding that in as a requirement, just so that we would keep in contact, at least initially, with the individuals who are doing this, because it is so new.
Yeah, I mean, I threw that out as an option to the plant commission, but there was no agreement to do that as far as an annual permit, so I left it as a one-time permit.
So something for the council to think about, I guess, while we're going through the rest of the, rest of the process here of the public hearing. Actually, Mr. Dr. Clovning did ask to speak, but I did not see him, so I don't know, perhaps he got called away. But if he comes back before we finish, we'll certainly give him an opportunity to speak. So any public statements in favor? Public statements against? Public statements in general?
Excuse me, I believe you have another card or another green sheet from someone wanting to speak?
Ah, maybe. No, not that one. You're right. I'm sorry, that one, it must have gotten slid in here. There is another individual who'd like to speak, Kirk Osborne? Can I give you a name and your address, please?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, council. I'm Kirk Osborne. I live at 1105 North Water Street, and I am a Platteville beekeeper, and I'd kind of like to explain that, because when I hear that it's currently not allowed, that surprises me. And a few years ago, I became very interested in beekeeping, and I did my homework, I did my research, I visited bee yards, I visited apiaries, I read books, I watched videos, I went to a bee class, and once all of that was done, feedback, once all of that was done, I looked up online, I looked for a city ordinance that pertained to this topic, and I didn't find it. Then I came to the city building, and I asked about it. I said, "What's on the books?" On Thursday, August 9th, 2012, I was, I received a message from Joe Carroll saying that they're confirming there's nothing on the books beyond the chapter six, general animal nuisance. So after receiving that message, I decided, "I'm going to put up some hives. Why not?" As far as the insurance concern, as long as it's a hobby, it's covered under homeowner's insurance. All right. Later that fall, I ordered three packages of bees. I've got pictures. Is that okay? Got three packages. This is what a package, this is what a package looks like. These are three, they're together. Each weighs three pounds, each contains about 12,000 bees. I set them up on my property. I've got a nice setup with a flat roof. It conveniently falls, as soon as I add water, a little bit closer to the hives, I meet all of the criteria in this ordinance, the way it is. Notification's a little different. I hope to talk about that in a little bit. This is a picture after I set up my hive of me and my five-year-old son directly outside the hives, as bees are going in and out. And I hope to talk a little bit about the nature of the honeybee, because it is very misunderstood by a majority of people in the United States. All right. On May 4th, 2013, earlier this spring, I received my bees. I installed the packages. I have three hives set up on my property right now, the way it is. I've invested over $2,000 in beekeeping. That's a lot of money for me. I love it. It's, it's great. If you ask around the city of Platteville, if you ask around some of the churches, if you ask around at the university or at the police department, they'll tell you that I'm very open about my beekeeping. I invite people into my house. I've had groups of parents and children in my house, and I take that opportunity, I take the opportunity to educate people. I explain to them what's happening inside, and this is a view from my kitchen, looking out onto the hives. People are protected by two large windows that I have. I talk to them through the protective screen, and it's, it's a really great thing. It's, it's just, it's, it's been wonderful. So I use, I use that time to, to teach, to answer questions. I give away free honey. I spread awareness about colony collapse disorder. We're losing a huge amount of bees in this country every year. I talk about some of the common farming practices. Some of the farmers don't necessarily appreciate that, but farming has changed since after World War II, and those changes are impacting bees. Chemical usage, I talk about some of the parasites, pollination, the benefits of pollination, and the big point that I try to talk about is the nature of the honeybee. I try to bring that understanding. You've raised a really great point with some people having an allergy. I believe what the doctor said on the 8th, a couple weeks ago, was that the average is 51 stings in the United States, resulting in death every year. A majority of those happen in southern states, killer bees. They're more aggressive. That's actually a DNA strand, it's not a type of bee. Is there something I can do, move forward, for feedback? No? Okay.
I think you need to move the podium up there.
What's that?
I think you need to move the podium, perhaps that way.
To your right, maybe. This way? Okay. All right. Over here? Okay. All right. I try to explain to people that honeybees are not aggressive, they're defensive. If a honeybee stings a mammal, it will die. Its stinger is removed from its body, and it dies. They're not geared to want to do that. It's a defensive mechanism. So I've been stung five times in the last year, and it was all my fault. I was wearing a bee suit, I'm in the hive, I'm digging around, I'm doing inspections, I'm taking honey, they're defending their hive, all right? Still got me through the bee suit. That's okay, that's to be expected. But I understand the concern. I've had three calls this summer to different people's houses. All three have told me, "Hey, I've got a bee problem, can you come check it out?" I go to their house, they're not bees. There are wasps, yellow jackets, hornets like crazy in Platteville. They're everywhere. I'm yet to be called to a honeybee problem. I just, I'm, I'm not seeing very many honeybees in Platteville, which is unfortunate. Hornets can be hyper-defensive, they can be aggressive. So something else to consider in the, in the doctor's stats that he gave two weeks ago, is that those 51 stings that result in death in the United States, those are stings in general, by what people call bee. I would be willing to bet a majority of those are not actually honeybees. It's probably a wasp, or a hornet, or a yellow jacket, whatever you want to call it. But inevitably, some of them probably are honeybees. And if that's the case, I would actually be a little curious to find out how many of those 51 were beekeepers, because it builds up in the system. One of these days, I may get stung, and I might have a reaction that I've never had before. All right, I'm almost finished. I've got two requests and one offer. The first request is that for the past year and well beyond that, I've exhibited that I am a knowledgeable and responsible beekeeper, and I've tried to share, you know, my knowledge of beekeeping with the community. Nothing was mentioned, and, and I don't know if it normally is mentioned in ordinance, about a grandfathering in or something like that. The fact is, I am a beekeeper, and the big part of that word is keeper. I don't, I don't want to risk, I don't, I don't want anything to happen that would risk me losing this hobby that I just love. So I don't know if, if there's a way for that to happen, if I could be granted a permit, since it's already set up. Another request would be that it has to do with item C, the notification. What did I do with my copy? There we go. In C1, it says, "Upon receipt of a completed beekeeping permit, application, and fee, the city shall provide a written notice to all property owners within 200 feet of the parcel in which the bees will be kept." I don't know where this came from. I don't know if it was borrowed from Madison, I don't know if it was borrowed from Dubuque, where. Whoever wrote this, I can sort of see where they're coming from with that, but my concern is that this doesn't really represent the nature of bees and how they function very well. If I look down at, at D, in location and standards, there's really great, the, the location, the orientation, and the flyaway barrier, those are all really great. Those make a lot of sense to me, especially the flyaway barrier. That flyaway barrier is going to prevent a lot of the issues with neighbors that people would sort of expect, whether it's a real expectation or not. That flyaway barrier, it, it makes a lot of sense.
What, what is a flyaway barrier? I don't understand that term.
A flyaway barrier? Okay. What, basically, what the flyaway barrier does is, it's, it's a physical barrier that forces the bees up.
And what, what's...
Bees, when they're, when they're coming and going, they don't fly at our level, unless the bushes or whatever they're pollinating is at our level. They'll bounce around from bush to bush. But if they're coming and going to the hive, they will fly up, way above us, above the trees, and get to where they're going. A lot of people don't know that stuff, and it's little things like that that make a big difference. Now, I understand the flyaway barrier, because the point is, if you're in your backyard, you don't want the bees, you know, flying into you, creating that defensive response. I get it, but that's not really the way they work. They fly up naturally, the way it is. So something else that, that, part of the issue with, with C, the notification, is that at any given time, approximately one-third of the bees in the hive, when they're, when they're, when the weather is right and the bees are out working, approximately one-third of the bees in the hive will actually leave the hive and contribute to that work. The other two-thirds stay in the hive. So if I have an incredibly large beehive of, say, 60,000 bees, and that's way over the top huge, if I have a hive that has 60,000 bees, at any given time, 20,000 of those workers, if they're out collecting, the average radius is two miles in every direction. So those 20,000 bees, again, a really high number, are going to be spread out over 8,000 acres. So neighbors, are they going to notice bees? Yeah, everyone in the city is going to notice more bees, if they're paying attention. Our neighbor's directly to the north of us, he says, "Yeah, I see them at my birdbath." I never used to see them at my birdbath. "I see your bees at my birdbath." Great, he doesn't mind. It gets him a free jar of honey. So my concern with C is that it might restrict who can become a beekeeper, who can keep bees in Platteville, based off of unnecessary fear and lack of knowledge of actual honeybees. I just, I, I don't want anyone to not be able to do it because someone does believe they're allergic, or because someone fears that the bees will be aggressive. In its place, I still think there is a place for notification here, though. And I think in its place, what should go is that on days that honey is harvested, or on days that there is going to be an invasive inspection of the hive, basically, if you're, if you're tearing that par, tearing apart that hive, if I'm taking frames out and looking, I'm disturbing what they're doing, and that defensive response is going to trigger. What I've been doing is I call my nearest neighbor to the north, and I say, "Hank, I'm planning on harvesting honey tomorrow. Can you stay out of your backyard from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.? They should be calmed down by then." And sometimes he does, and sometimes he doesn't. In the cases that he doesn't, and he still is in his backyard, that, that flyaway barrier is enough. They still don't bug, they still don't bug him. So I don't know. It's, I don't like C. C, I think, is, I don't want someone to be restricted from C because of someone else that's misinformed, or has a fear that's just not justified. So, and the last, the last bit is the offer. I don't know, I don't know who's going to be doing inspections, I don't know if the city is going to get more calls from bee, more calls concerning honeybees that are concern, you know, bringing concern, or whatever. But if that's the case, I would like to offer my time, because I know beekeeping, and I know honeybees. And if there are questions, I want those questions answered. So if somebody wants my phone number, I'm more than willing to give them my phone number. I'll answer questions. If, if this needs to wait until a different date, if decisions can't be made, or whatever, I would appreciate whatever opportunity there is for, for me to help put something together that does make sense to everybody involved. So are there questions?
Any other questions?
Well, you say the bees go vertical.
They will fly...
After they leave the hive.
After they leave the hive, they'll fly up. Yes, sir.
Within how many feet of leaving the hive do they become vertical?
I don't have an answer to that. I've heard 42 degrees. I've read that 42 degrees is the angle of descension.
How many horizontal feet before they go vertical? Are they going vertical...
It's pretty quick. It's pretty quick. I stand at my window, and we have maybe, maybe 10 feet from, from the front of the hive to where the roof of the garage drops off, and they're already up and gone. It's, it's pretty quick. They're pretty efficient at what they do. They're pretty, you know, A to B oriented.
Any other questions, Ken? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I don't think we have any public statements in general. Council discussion.
Well, it's too bad we didn't have this gentleman available when Joe was writing the ordinance. He does know a lot. And you think that this is fun, huh? Beekeeping. Is it? Okay. I'll leave that to you. I don't have any problem with the grandfathering idea.
I guess the only question I would have about that is, we don't really know how many other people are keeping bees in the city, and so I don't know if people will come in and say they, they've been doing it for a while, and maybe don't want to go through the inspection process. Joe, do you have a feeling on that? An opinion on that?
Well, since this is a change to chapter six, rather than strictly a zoning change, I don't think, you know, grandfathering is, is something that applies in this situation. You know, typically, if we, if we make an ordinance change to a zoning ordinance change, something that's pre-existing that doesn't conform to that is illegal non-conforming use, it's grandfathered in, but since this is a different zoning ordinance, or a different ordinance amendment, I don't think that situation necessarily applies, so...
I think our city attorney is agreeing with you.
Yeah, our, it's not a zoning ordinance, the concept of grandfathering isn't applicable.
Okay. Any other discussion from the council? Otherwise, I would need a motion to close the public hearing.
I, I do have a, you had mentioned President Nichols about some kind of renewal, or, and I guess I would have liked to have seen, I mean, I, I'm not saying annual, but at some point in time, it would be nice to know if that is still active, so I, I don't, I, I wouldn't care about collecting a fee, but I would want to, I don't know what, how you would put that in. And did the plan commission discuss that?
Stop over and ask them.
The plan commission?
No. The gentleman, if you're concerned with, if his license, if they're still keeping bees, pick up the phone or walk over and say, "Are you still doing bees?" Real simple.
And it could be that simple. We could just instruct the community planning development department to try to periodically check.
Send out an annual letter?
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, and we'll vote. Nichols? Yes. Steiner?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. This clerk put in front of us an ordinance, the actual language and the resolution number.
That was for the vending on city property.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's for the vending thing. So that's what I get for talking about something else with you at the same time. All right. So we have before us the beekeeping ordinance, and is there a motion on that?
Make a motion that we accept the ordinance as with the condition that they, they're going to change chapter six and chapter 27 to make it conform.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, I'm sorry.
So a second?
Okay.
We have a motion in a second, and we'll vote. Nichols? Yes. Steiner?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved in a single motion and vote due to their routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. First item is the minutes from the October 8th, 13th regular council meeting, and also the October 14th, 13 special council meeting. B is payment of bills, that's in the packet. C is appointments to boards and commissions in this evening. The two appointments I have are both to the airport commission, Ed White, and then Adam Pick is a reappointment. Licenses, we have in our packet information on one- and two-year operators' licenses, and also taxi drivers. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, and we'll vote. Nichols? Yes. Steiner?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. We would ask that you do limit your comments to five minutes, and if you are, will, are interested in speaking on an issue, we have a form on the table over there that we do ask that you fill out. So first, Kurt Timlin on ATV route, and followed by Jack Ludkey.
I'm Kurt Timlin. I do not reside in the city of Platteville. I live at 2096 County Road A in Platteville, Wisconsin. What I'm here for... What I'm here for tonight is just some general information. I'm currently a snowmobile club member in the local club here in Platteville. And there's a new kind of initiative, or new initiative in Grant County somewhat, anyway, to develop ATV trails in conjunction with snowmobile trails. The problem is, is that the ATV trails in Grant County can't be like they are in Lafayette County because of the fact that we don't have rail beds to ride on and things like that, like they do in Lafayette County. In Lafayette County, this economic impact study that I shared with you guys tonight, just for general information, shows that the economic impact of ATVers in the county is about fifteen million dollars. When they originally did the study in 2010, the clubs and so forth had thought that it might be around half of that number. Then, when the study came back, and it was double that number, of course, everybody took notice of it. In general, what we're trying to do is connect some of the communities together through ATV routes. The county has already approved some ATV routes in some areas. For instance, they are now able to go from Belmont to Rui to Arthur to Livingston to Stitzer. One of the things that we would like to be able to bring in front of the council eventually is if there's any chance that we could bring a route into Platteville, or possibly multiple routes. What the goal would be, would be to come in where our snowmobile trail comes in, say, down by Culvers in that area down there with a route, possibly coming in via Evergreen Road out by the industrial park. And then, the other goal would be possibly to come in off of County B or Mitchell Hollow to Mound View Park, and then possibly be able to take a route from Mound View Park just up to the stop and go for a fuel stop. Grasshut in Darlington, if any of you are familiar with it, on the weekends, their camp spots are all taken up. Their camp spots are taken up mostly by ATVers utilizing the trails. The Mound View Park already has sites there. It already has bathrooms there. It already has showers there. We've got excellent facilities in Platteville that are underutilized at this point. So, the potential is already there. I mean, there's some things there that would probably make Platteville attractive. And if we could have basically two routes that we can connect together to make a loop, ATVers like loops. You know, they don't like to necessarily drive somewhere and then drive the same way back home. It's kind of nice to be able to make things into a loop. And eventually, that's kind of the goal here, is to loop a bunch of these communities together, if possible. And we're just out now trying to do some of the footwork. I've been to a Harrison Township meeting. We wanted to start here in Platteville because Platteville's kind of a key, you know, and then try to build from there, basically. But, so that's just kind of general information to present tonight, and we'd like to possibly get it on the council agenda, if we could, and then come in and answer questions and whatnot, so.
Thank you.
Do you have a timetable, Kurt, for this happening?
Well, it, it could happen at any time. We'd like to get on agenda as soon as we possibly could. It can happen at any time. The, the thing is, like I said, the difference between the snowmobile trails and the ATV trail is, is our snowmobile trails, you know, we cut across farms and things like that. Well, obviously, during the winter, we can do that when crops are out and so forth. The route thing, there's part of the old railroad bed that we could possibly use down behind Culvers and get out to Evergreen Road, basically below the hospital pro, well, below the Harms property. And then, like I say, continue through the industri, the backside of the industrial part and get into Lafayette County that way. We, we would be funded by ourselves, basically. The main cost to doing something like this is signage. You know, the better your signage is, obviously, the better people are going to stay on the trail and do the things that they should be doing. We would assume, as a club, once we established a club, once we knew there was a need there, we would assume the responsibility of the signage and the cost of the signage. Some municipalities pay for the signage themselves and so forth. But our goal would be that we would be self-sustaining, which is the same thing we do as a snowmobile club. We pay for our signs through registrations and things like that. And then, we actually get, on those, we get reimbursed by the state through our registrations and so forth. So, we would want to be self-sufficient, you know.
I would suggest you talk to the city manager and also Mr. Crowfoot, and about getting onto an agenda.
All right. Thank you.
Do you build any bridges at all?
Do we have to build any bridges?
Yes.
Not necessarily.
How does this affect the arbitrary, arbitrary, the trails?
It, as of right now, it doesn't affect them at all by-
You're not going to go over them and cause a problem?
No. Our, our thing is, is if we would have to, once again, we can make ATV routes wherever we would be allowed to make them. I mean, ATV routes can be established on city streets. They can be established in these areas. So, if we need to make them in that manner, that's what we would do. If we can work with the arboretum, and they're willing to work with us, then that's fine. We'd work with them. You know, it's, it's the lowest possible impact scenario is the best way to do it, obviously. No different than currently with our snowmobile trail. We go across some of the arboretum stuff, and they go across some stuff that was always snowmobile trail before, you know. And to this point, everybody's gotten along, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ludkey?
My name is Jack Ludkey. I'm the executive director for the Platteville Main Street program. And I just wanted to take a few minutes tonight to make the council aware of what we believe to be a very successful Second Street Block Party, and to thank those council people who were able to attend. I hope you had a good time. We have had a lot of positive feedback about it in regard to people saying that they were down there and remembered meeting friends there years ago, and hadn't seen friends in years, and they were reunited during the block party. And for those of you who attended, I think, can attest to the fact that this was not just a college night out. There were a number of people who, as I said, have never been on Second Street, probably in the last five to ten years, that did show up and had a good time. And I also wanted to let you know to compliment the police chief, Doug McKinley, and his staff for the work they did. I've had a discussion with the chief since then, and if I'm reading you right, chief, there was little or no additional activity that night. It probably was a, a much better evening on the Second Street Block. We are planning a, a meeting to assess the party, and we will have a, hopefully, another party scheduled for next year. And we will move forward with that. Also, Howard Crowfoot's team was able to support us and did a great job of providing fencing and the things that we needed, and getting picnic tables there, too. So, those two gentlemen did the city proud in helping to put this event on, and we thank you for that.
Thank you. Under reports, we have committee reports. City Hall Task Force, Nichols or Stackhausen, I don't have any additions.
They're moving ahead, visiting some communities and getting some answers.
It's a good group. Plan Commission, Den and Nichols?
Nothing other than minutes.
I have nothing to add either. Airport Commission, the information's in your packet. And Water and Sewer Commission, Steiner, Killian, and Bonan.
No addition.
I have nothing. All right. Other reports in your packet. Building inspector report. City attorney itemized statement and department progress reports. Any questions or comments on any of those reports?
Yes. The citations issued due to the address of four ninety-five Irene Street. Is that house rented, or is this the owner? Or what is the situation there?
I believe that property owner lives out of state, but has a relative living at that location. But I think it's a duplex, if I recall. There's the property owner's relative, his son, I believe, lives in one unit, and the other unit's rented out.
So, it's not a student house?
I don't know who lives in the other unit. I think it's a duplex, so I'm not sure who. I think his son, the owner's son, lives in one half, and I'm not sure about the other half.
Okay. Thank you.
So, what's the length of time to come to a resolution on this type of thing? I mean, there's quite a number of problems here.
Yeah. I, I mean, as you can see, the, the citations were written out, and then give them opportunity to make the corrections. They were not made, so additional citations were written and so forth. At this point, you know, there's intake dates when they go to court. I believe the first time has already passed. The property owner did not show up, so they were found guilty, basically, in their absence. The second and third round of citations have not gone before the judge yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Have additional citations been issued, or has the problem been rectified?
As of today, I do not believe the problem has been rectified. We're waiting to see how these other citations go through the court and what the judge finds. They have not all been in front of the judge, so we're waiting through the process to be complete.
Any other questions? All right. First, action item, ordinance thirteen twenty-three repealing ordinance twelve oh five, vending on city property. Staff presentation on this one?
Good evening. A recent clarification on the interpretation of the vending ordinances as they apply at the state level, basically, left us with the conclusion that our current vending ordinance is not appropriate as written, and portions of it would not really be enforceable. A previous exclusion that we felt was in the ordinance no longer exists. There's just a, a host of problems with enforcing our vending ordinance as it's currently written. I would recommend, and I've been in consultation with the city attorney and various members of the council, I would recommend that we repeal our current vending ordinance and evaluate if one is needed at all, and if one is, go into it with a more thoughtful development of successor ordinance.
Any questions? We would need a motion.
I would move to repeal city ordinance thirty-one, no, what is it?
Thirteen twenty-three.
Thirteen dash twenty-three repealing section thirty-one point fifteen, vending on city property.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, and we'll vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is library block real estate lawyer contract. You received some information, I believe, this week from the city attorney, but, or, excuse me, city manager, and he might want to elaborate on that.
The proposed contract covers legal services necessary for establishing development agreements and working out the relationships we would have with other development partners for the redevelopment of the library block, as discussed earlier, both at the council meeting and at work sessions. The library block is a redevelopment proposal that came out of the downtown development plan, and a community group has been working on that probably for about a year and a half. And we're at a point now where we're, we're prepared to start drafting some contracts to make the library block development a reality. In fact, I'm happy to announce that the city of Platteville was recently successful in securing a five hundred thousand dollar CDBG grant to help with the redevelopment idea. What this contract does is it hires a Stephen Roy from Geier, Homar, and Roy. It's a law firm out of several offices, Madison, South City, and Wanniwock, to help draft the documents we were looking for. The city attorney and the city manager interviewed three different lawyers, who all had experience in twenty million dollar developments with multi-use or mixed-use developments. And after interviewing three candidates, we believe that this is the attorney that is best prepared or would represent us the best.
Questions?
I have one, Larry. Red, when it starts out with the hourly rate, I know you and I had this discussion of, we didn't want just a firm to be taking over. We wanted to have some specific lawyer.
Right.
And it starts out right here, it says mutually agreed that the hourly fees, the legal services performed by any attorney in the firm will be billed at a said rate. That kind of goes away from what we were talking about. If we, we don't want the firm working on it. We want a specific lawyer, correct?
Right. And we've got a commitment from this lawyer that he will be doing eighty percent of the work, which is perhaps a little bit different than some of the other attorneys we interviewed. We were looking for someone who would be the go-to person for this project and to help craft the documents without farming out internally to the law firm tasks that he would then need to converse with. Sometimes, I've seen legal contracts where an associate attorney discusses with an attorney, and we get billed for that time. And we were trying to avoid that while maintaining a high level of service from the law firm.
Okay. Thank you.
So, it is, in this contract, there is the guarantee that eighty percent will be performed by?
That was not a guarantee. That was a discussed verbally.
There is no guarantee.
There is not a guarantee. He did say that that was what he anticipated doing.
That's not good enough.
Well, there is the idea that if you're not satisfied with his services, you can fire, you can simply disengage from him. If you don't think he's doing enough of the work, you explain that to the person. If it's not corrected to your satisfaction, disengage.
That would be pretty hard to tell whether he's doing it or not.
You look at the billing sheet.
Don't they get the billing?
The billing should reflect the conversations that were being billed for.
It should be fairly clear who's doing the work when you get the bill.
Well, yeah. I've seen him bill things differently at times.
No.
There, there were certain things that we discussed at the interview process that we felt appropriate for them to distribute to, you know, an associate attorney or, or paralegal staffing. And so, we had a pretty good conversation about what is, what is expected.
Okay.
As far as doing the work, would this person have a legal assistant or assistants doing the work? So, when you say doing the work, it may actually be somebody else doing the work for the person.
And we can't confirm, we don't know the operations of individual law firms. Certainly, someone could do that, but-
Somebody else is actually doing the work, and not this person.
I would think there would be professional ethics that would prevent them from billing us for time if somebody else is doing the work.
And my next question is, who's paying the bill? City?
Yes.
Next question is, do we have the money in any account?
Well, this project would be a TID eligible expense. We're anticipating that upon completion, we would have a project of about twenty million dollars. So, we believe at this point that the tax revenue generated from this development could assist in paying the legal bills. We could also wrap the legal bills into any debt issued as further an incentive to a developer. So, we do not plan for this funds, these funds to come out of the tax base for our taxpayers generally.
But in the meantime, they'll be coming out of the taxpayer general fund. Until such time as supposedly we'll get money to pay out of this as far as TIF funds. Correct?
The TID does not have cash on hand, so we would need to borrow that from another source. That could be the city, it could be utility, it could be any internal fund transfer.
It could be another TID, right?
Could be. We would probably have to have that arrangement established in the TID document if we were to borrow from another TID, but.
What's the grant money for? That's five hundred thousand.
Yep. That was a CDBG public facilities grant for blight elimination. And so, our intent now is to assist the developer, whomever that ends up being, with assembling of property and demolition of property. And that's what the money would be used for. It would be an incentive to the developer to move forward with that process.
So, that can't be used to pay me the bill like attorney fees?
Not for what we want to use the attorney for. If an attorney were necessary to seal the deal on purchasing of a property for filing of paperwork or drafting deeds- for filing of paperwork or drafting deeds, we could probably use it for that purpose. But what we're really looking for out of this particular attorney is the drafting of contracts and legal documents establishing the relationship for the partners working together to make this development happen. So it's a little bit of a higher level of service that we're anticipating from this attorney.
So this attorney would be hired in an as-needed basis?
Yes, and he is needed. I have a meeting on Monday.
You have a scope addendum as part of information that was provided to us earlier, and so it does specifically talk about the real estate matters and the project entity review, grant government programs, financing review, developer reviewing contracts, construction contract reviews, things like that. And again, it is as needed. But in order to move this project along, it would be, I think, a good thing for the city to have someone who is experienced in this kind of development, an attorney.
I did invite Mr. Roy to attend this evening. Unfortunately, he did have other commitments that he, in short notice, wasn't able to rearrange. But I do look forward to bringing him to a council meeting and introducing you.
I make a motion that we approve the fee agreement with Guyer, Homer, and Roy LLP.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dawes?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item under information and discussion is the cleaning contract with S&amp;A Cleaning. Howard?
Yes. We sent out a request for proposal for cleaning services for the city hall building, the library, and the senior center for calendar years 2014 through the end of 2016, three years. There was one response by S&amp;A Cleaning Services owned by Ms. Altman, our current contractor. The contract price is fixed for those, for all three years. We have daily cleaning services for the city hall administrative offices, the library, and the senior center. We have also proposed potentially doing monthly cleanings for the auditorium based on usage in the auditorium. And we were thinking possibly quarterly cleaning of the old police department if desired by the council. That would keep that in, that area maintained a little bit and potentially allow that to be shown and if that's what was desired. We have a copy of the contract and the bid tabulation and the costs. Like I say, the overall daily costs are listed, you know, for the daily cleanings based on the square footage per month and per year for each of the buildings. If we go with everything in the contract, it would be a little over $51,000 a year for all three buildings.
Where is it on here for the vacant police area? Where is it on this list?
On that second page, it says quarterly, old police department, forty-two ninety-six square feet. That area would cost $515 per quarter, basically for each cleaning, which for four cleanings would be slightly over $2,000.
Thank you.
How does this compare to the bid that we had before from last year?
Last time, for the two and a half years that we did this, the base bid for daily cleaning was 12 cents a square foot per month of cleaning for the administrative areas. We had, Mr. Allen in my office did work with the library and the senior center and made sure that we adjusted the square feet appropriately for the administrative areas being cleaned. So that's part of it.
What was our total cost for cleaning?
That I don't...
The contract?
That I don't have for all of that.
The contract was about $39,640.
Oh.
So it's up considerably from last year?
Well, it depends on what you're...
That's for two and a half years you're talking about, right?
Right.
Oh, each year.
Each year.
Each year.
But we had, you know, we had an extra six months that we...
Well, previously, we didn't clean the police station and the auditorium, which the police station certainly doesn't get used.
Before we went to the outside contractors, didn't we clean all that with the people that we had before?
I think once it stopped being used, it wasn't cleaned.
They did the auditorium and everything else, didn't they?
Not very often.
Didn't they?
No.
I was just curious if what the dollar value is, what we really gained from a contract cleaner versus what we had before? Because I do know that they had another gentleman with the city that would go around and do other things that were normally done, but the contract cleaners don't do. So was that added on to give us an idea of what the comparison would be? Probably should have that, shouldn't we?
If that's what you're requesting for next time.
I would like to see that, please.
It showed on the staff report, there's a savings.
Every quarter, the city council gets a staffing report that reviews the cost of what we pay for cleaning services and what we've saved for not having cleaning employees present. So if you want, we can produce another copy of that for your review. I think it was last council meeting where it would have been in the packet, if you want to go back and look.
If it was comparing the same things, but I thought they weren't comparing the same things actually, because there were some things that were cleaned and taken care of before that aren't done now. So those aren't the same comparisons.
My question is, do you have any idea as to the total number of hours that will be worked to do all this cleaning that's being proposed?
That's not how they bid on it.
That's now how we've bid on it, so I don't check to see how many hours it takes to do the actual cleaning. If we bid it by hour instead of by a square foot, then we would be looking at it like that.
You don't know how long it takes them, how long they're in the building to clean this building?
I can look at the records of...
How long they're in the library or wherever to do the cleaning? I'm just trying to get an idea of whether we're better off with an employee versus hiring a firm.
You're always better with a firm. You're always better with a firm.
They come in in the middle of the night and do the cleaning when there's no staff disruptions. Our analysis, when we switched to the cleaning service contract, showed a significant savings by switching to an employee, to a contract.
But you didn't compare the same things. You didn't compare everything those other people did. You came in with the outside contracting firm and said, here, do this, do this, do this. Then it was less money.
Actually, there was analysis done, and we decided that it took certain hours of a public works employee to pick up the services. So when you count the cost of the contract plus the additional hours from the public works employee, the city of Platteville is still saving money.
I'd like to see those numbers.
It's on your quarterly staffing report.
Well, in my experience at my business, if outside firm dressed, I mean, it just simply saves us money because we don't have the overhead as far as added employment expense, taxes, and that type of thing.
And cleaning supplies.
Cleaning supplies. Equipment. They bring all that in themselves.
I have a question on the city hall auditorium, the 7,032 square feet. Is that just the auditorium itself and the stage, or does that include the basement too, Hearn?
I believe that it includes the basement area a little bit. I'd have to look through here a little bit.
The contract does have an hourly wage, though.
It's twenty.
Twenty? So if at some point we decided we wanted the auditorium cleaned, we could pay them the $20 per hour to have that done.
Twelve.
Twelve. Twelve per hour.
Yes.
And what that would do is, you know, instead of signing on to the $10,000 a year expense, if we had them do it at $12 an hour on an as-needed basis, you may not need it cleaned every month, or you may need it more frequently than every month.
Yeah, I mean, from my experience, I don't know that the basement is used that much except during play productions, you know, the dressing rooms. But certainly the auditorium and the stage floor definitely needs to be cleaned about once a month.
The upper level too, or just the main floor of the auditorium?
The main floor.
Just the main, the main seating area, not the upper level? I don't know if the upper level is included in the 7,000 square feet too.
In the past, I think if there was an event, we'd get a phone call and ask the cleaning service to schedule a special cleaning for that space.
I'm only aware of the balcony being used, I think, when they bring in kids for gut track or something, I don't think it gets used that much. So once every two years, the balcony.
So do you think an as-per-needed basis would make it doable? For the balcony? For the entire auditorium, rather than having it cleaned once a month?
Well, but it's used every week by the church.
Well, my suggestion was just the actual auditorium floor and the stage. I don't think the balcony in the basement needs it though. Maybe that would save a little.
So what you're asking for is to have an idea of what that would cost if it was done every month? I think if someone is renting the space, I'm not sure that we want to clean it every week, but... I guess that's something to be looked at.
I thought we were going to look at the rental fee so that we got more money for them renting it because they're leaving...
I can't remember if that was one of the fees that went up or not.
Yeah, I don't know. And is it still used every Sunday, the auditorium?
It currently is used every Sunday, yes.
That's why it needs to be cleaned once a month.
Okay, anything else on that? Any questions or comments?
I have a question. If I look in the current budget document for 2014, the 2014 executive budget, will I find that the library cleaning services are in the library portion and the senior center cleaning services are in the senior center budget? Are those allocated?
Are the hard professional services?
It's in the professional services category.
With the library? Under professional services is part of one of the services that we have. And if I could speak on behalf of S&amp;A for the library is, Danny Allen and I spent a lot of time with Connie Steinhoff deciding this year what really needed to be cleaned, how it needed to be cleaned. We went over their duties and determined what was maintenance versus what was cleaning, so that might be some difference in what work they do. Library usually is two to two and a half hours every morning. They take care of us on weekends. It will cost us less next year because of the reduction in the number of square footage that they will be actually cleaning. As far as I know, we don't have a maintenance person anymore doing maintenance work. So some of those things like changing light bulbs and sweeping outside and cleaning windows are not included, so there's some difference there.
So is that...
But we've been very pleased with them.
Is that reflected in this contract then, the decrease in space?
Yes, we spent a lot of time on... Well, I'm sorry, Barb, your question again?
My question is, is that reflected in this contract in terms of the decreased amount of space?
Yes, it is.
Who does the maintenance?
We have no one. We asked the street department to help us when they can, but it's, we call when we need something done.
Like I said, that's a cost to the street department.
Right, well, we did have somebody assigned to us for two hours a week on Monday, but that has been eliminated. So that's something we're going to have to look at next year to see who does maintenance for the building. But I don't believe anyone's been assigned from the city. I don't know if there's a person assigned.
We don't assign a person to go there on a weekly basis anymore. What we do is we work with the director, with Carolyn, and make sure that when we have maintenance items, we take care of them as we can. The street department will schedule someone to come and do that work. It may not necessarily be exactly at the time that she's looking for, but that's a coordination thing that we work out together to make sure that it gets done. Like I say, when we first started, we had allocated a certain amount of time once a week, just basically say, okay, go over there for an hour or two hours and make sure that you coordinate with Carolyn and do maintenance items that need to be done. If it took two hours, it took two hours. If it took an hour, it took an hour. But as we've progressed, we still have those street department tasks. So it's been a little bit more of a juggling act, making sure that we can provide someone to work either over at the library or the senior center. But we do, we do get there.
The real cost of this contract is not shown to us because we don't have the maintenance in it. That's the real cost. It's another job general that's put onto the street people that they should come and do maintenance for different places.
But cleaners didn't do the maintenance last year.
Right.
And we have not included the maintenance this year either. And we took out the task that could be construed as being maintenance. Some of the items that they were asked to do were strictly maintenance. And working with Dan and Connie and the cleaners, we determined that they were really maintenance issues and not cleaning issues. We've been very pleased with S&amp;A, and like I said, it's going to cost us less next year. I don't know about the city or senior center, but...
Who's going to do the maintenance, though?
The street department.
The street department will still do that.
That's a cost, that's a cost.
And we allocate that under the municipal building budget, a certain number of hours for one of our people to come and do those sorts of maintenance items. It's not a lot of time, but there is time in there that's allocated for that specific purpose.
So you can give us that information at the next meeting.
And obviously, you're taking that person away from their regular duty, so then they lose also. That's what happens when we cut staff.
Any other questions? I think that the questions are clear, so the information will be brought back when we have this on for an action item. Next is transportation aid report. Howard, you have some information in our packet about the general transportation aid calculation.
This is for information only, no vote is required now or any other time. At our last budget meeting, there were some questions about the general transportation aids, the fact that they went up this last year. I kind of went through the calculation process. It's based on the actual street repair maintenance and construction costs averaged over a six-year period. And then they apply a rate of reimbursement to that. So what it basically, and then they have certain floors and ceilings that you get as well. Our rate is nearly fifteen and a half percent. So what they do is they take the actual costs that we have and then apply this fifteen and a half percent, and that came out to our calculated aid. But then we were capped at our ceiling of the $678,000. What I'm really trying to point out to you is the fact that we've dropped our expenses over the last couple of years will hurt us starting next year. When it's budget time for 2015, if we keep decreasing our formulas in our budget in street construction, repair, and maintenance, we can expect a decrease in our aids by $45,000 or more starting next year. So that's one of those things, we don't want to get into a death spiral on aids. If you get less state aids, you cut the budget, you get less state aid, you cut the budget more, we need to, we need... uh, we need to, we need to s- make sure that we, uh, keep that in mind, uh, for this and future budget years.
Just a question, when Water Street was done, because that was a state highway, was the total cost of that included in these, uh, street expenses?
Quite frankly, I've looked at the reports, um, and it's quite magical to me exactly how that works. Um, uh, the finance department submits, uh, a report every year on, on what the city pays, and they're in specific categories. And there are some things that are, that are very apparent, that, that are in that budget line item, uh, that get included in the costs that the state uses and others that I really don't understand where they, uh, take them from our report. You know, some of the things like they, they allocate a portion of our debt service, uh, to, to the roads and highways, and that's calculated. But to be able to say that our Water Street number was in there, I have no idea. I think it is, but that's-
I was just curious, because obviously the expenses that we had on streets when we did Water Street would have been very high if all that was included. That would have been to our benefit, but-
Actually, the Water Street number for the city portion was not very high. It was only-
That was my question, whether or not they also took into consideration the federal money or state money that was allocated for their project? If it was, then-
I, I think they probably do. They probably net out the expenses and the, and the revenue coming back from the state. So the actual cost to the city was probably quite low.
Yeah, the, the net cost for the city for, uh, for Water Street was two seventy to three hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Now, the, the water and sewer, that was completely funded by the Water and Sewer Commission, and that was, that was a, a very large expense. But the city portion was relatively low.
Yeah. I was just wondering, when you look at the numbers, how much of that was included? Any questions on that? All right, Delta Three Engineering contract.
The Delta Three Engineering, uh, provides the engineering services for the city of Plattville. Uh, their contract expires, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. Uh, what you'll find in your packet is the cover sheet as well as a contract that extends their service, uh, for one year. Um, we had discussed and, uh, Delta Three brought forward a second contract, uh, that would have been a three-year contract. Um, at this point, uh, after meeting with council leadership, uh, we believe it's in the best interest of the city to do a one-year, um, extension of the existing contract and then negotiate or work on a, us, another, a different contract for the next three years. So before you is the extension and, um-
For your information, those people who have this packet only electronically only got pages one, three, and five of the-
Yeah.
Uh, contract. We didn't get pages two and four.
Yeah, they were back to back, right?
I'm sorry, occasionally accidents happen. Um, if you'd like to, oh, is this for, this is information and discussion. I will ensure that you receive the full contract for our next meeting.
It's not on the computer?
No.
It's not on the computer, must not have gotten copied.
It's the management of a hard copy.
Right, you are, Ken.
Accidents can happen, whether it's electronic or hard copy.
What, why, um, why only one year? Well, what is the reasoning?
Uh, we are very satisfied with the services we receive from Delta Engineering. Um, a few years ago, we had a, uh, an opportunity to have Marquee Drive installed as part of a federal, uh, program where we received a lot of grant money from the federal government. And, uh, about a year ago, we looked into doing all of the engineering um, in an effort to make Broadway Street shovel-ready as defined by the federal government in case we had another opportunity to get federal grant money from the, from the federal government to pay for Broadway Street. Um, we did not have that opportunity. Um, Broadway Street is principally fully engineered at this point. Um, so we felt it was a good idea to make sure we got at least a one-year contract to finish Broadway Street with Delta Three Engineering. Perhaps next year, we'll be in a position to, um, negotiate or, or bid out services for, um, for a longer-term contract.
I haven't quite gotten it. So what, what-
So the purpose of doing a one-year contract was to ensure that we got Broadway Street constructed with Delta Three Engineering.
They, they, they've designed it already?
Yes, it is all pre-
Done.
All engineered.
Okay.
Uh, I don't want to say all done, it's eighty-five percent.
Basically done.
Yeah.
But we want them working on the street next year.
Yes.
Yes.
Because?
Because they've done the preliminary, or most of the engineering already, and it makes sense to continue to use them.
Extending it three years?
This is extending it one year.
I know, but they've offered us three years. I'm trying to figure out why you don't want to do three. You're going to get it cheaper?
I think.
Go to somebody else?
If you can get it cheaper, I guess that's what we should do.
I, I don't know if we'll get it less expensive. Uh, however, we would like the opportunity to have those conversations.
Anything else?
I do want to note that Dan Dresens from Delta Three Engineering is here if any of the council members have questions for the engineering company. Uh, I do want to, uh, reaffirm that Delta Three has done a fabulous job for us, and we are very pleased with their services.
In general, I have no problem with their work. But once in a while, I do. Dan knows that.
All right, so this is, in here for information, discussion, with action next time. Um, we are going to, uh, go off camera and go into a work session to discuss the two thousand fourteen budget discussion. And then at that time, when we're finished, do we do the closed session motion? Or should we do it now?
The what?
I think that's a city clerk question.
During our work session?
You can do whatever you want, but I think it would be more appropriate right before closed session.
All right, so we'll go on the work session. Thank you.